Item number eight, public hearings, we have two this evening. The first one is, "Hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule for 2012-2013, establishing fees for municipal services." And the second one is, "Hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution adopting a groundwater management plan for the southwest side basin."
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This item before you, the master fee schedule, is a compilation of City Council-approved fees for city services offered to members of the community. The city is allowed to set fees in a manner that allows for reasonable recovery of costs incurred providing services and programs to the public. Departments conduct periodic review of their fees to ensure cost recovery is being achieved and propose changes to fees in those instances where costs of -- to provide a service has increased. The proposed changes to the master fee schedule that is being presented to you tonight are limited to three chapters to the master fee schedule. The first change is to the library, which is chapter six. No changes to fees are being proposed in sections one and two, simply some changes to the wording for purposes of providing greater clarity. And then section three includes the addition of fees associated with the rental of the recently renovated community room at the library. The proposed fees mirror the rates charged by the recreation department for those similar facilities. The next chapter where changes are being proposed is chapter eight, the Public Services Department. Again, some minor verbiage changes are being proposed for the purpose of providing greater clarity. And in addition, an hourly rate for a public works inspector is being added to the hourly rate section. It's not a new fee or new rate, it already exists in the master fee schedule in conjunction with encroachment permits. However, it is the hourly rate that is used for all site visits and inspections, so that is a reason for including it in this new section. And finally, chapter nine of the master fee schedule, parks and recreation fees. There are a number of changes to those fees. Staff performed an analysis of costs associated with providing programs and classes and have recommended a number of changes due to the increased costs of staff time and supplies associated with offering those programs. I'm not going to go into detail about the individual changes, although I'm happy to answer questions on those if any, if you have any. Finally, just to add on the parks and recreation fees, all those fees did go before the Parks and Recreation Commission and were approved in May. One final change with the parks and recreation fees is in section six, which adds the option of a 15-gallon tree for tree replacement in conjunction with a tree removal permit in addition to the 24-inch box. So that summarizes all the proposed changes to the 2012-13 master fee schedule. And one other item of note is that the resolution that is before you tonight contains a couple of changes from the resolution that went out in the packet. Just very quickly, the third whereas was changed to provide a little bit better clarity of the intent of these fee changes and has been reworded to state that the City Council has directed that fees for certain city services should be set at an amount to recover the cost of delivering the service. And in addition, the verbiage of state constitution was added following the article references in the fourth and fifth whereas.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. On the parks and recreation, had questions under the after-school summary day camp sessions. You have items number 13 and 14. We have a playground program which is free, so I'd like to have clarification of what that is. I remember from my day, but obviously things evolved quite a bit since I've left, to know what that is and if it's free, we're trying to recoup costs. Second is the leader in training. I didn't quite know what that was, but then I learned at Dedication at City Park, we had some young people that are leaders in training. And those are volunteers, so they're not paid by the city, but they are -- it's another aspect for them to be involved and volunteer their time. However, they're -- or I'm sure they're not paying, I bet it's their parents or somebody else, some nice person, $50 a session. And how long is a session? And what are we currently charging them? Meaning, is it $35 as of today and it will go up, or has it been $50?
So to answer just that question on the dollars, the $35 is the rate that is being charged today. The proposed rates would not go into effect until the fall, they would not be in effect for the summer programs or classes, so those rates are not in effect right at this time. Does that answer your question on that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I don't have specific answers on your other questions as far as what the playground program is or exactly what the leader in training program is.
So the leader in training program is actually a -- it's organized as if it is a volunteer program, but it is also -- the young people in that program are actually around 12 or 13, so not quite yet old enough to maybe be on their own at home or have a job or become a recreation leader. And so it is a way for them to get some experience while also having care from adults while the summer is going on and their families are working, et cetera. So the families are kind of accustomed to looking at it as both a way for their children to learn something, but also as a -- they still need some supervision and care because of their ages.
How long is a session, do we know?
I do not know about what the length of a session is.
Is it weekly? Most of the sessions in the summer, I believe, are -- I'm going back to old days there, but usually the new format was weekly.
I believe that is correct, and it goes through most of the summer. Leaders in training program isn't a brief, like one week camp, it's actually something that goes the entire length of the summer because during when kids are at school.
I guess my concern is, is that if it's a week session and we're taking a young person and we're asking them to volunteer to assist and we're charging now going to be, was $35, $50 a week for them to volunteer, I mean, not many folks volunteer and then you have to pay to volunteer. But I understand you're saying there's some costs associated with it, which is they're having, I guess, they're assisting the paid staff, so the paid staff is watching them, who's helping to watch the kids. Just on the outset, it just sounds very expensive. I guess that's my -- the bottom line. I'm trying to understand, the $50, is it -- because really, the young people in the program are paying for the staff time, so in essence, they're paying for the same staff time. I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but I think we have young people and I think it might be an economic burden to some folks who, as you say, are looking to try to engage them in some leadership qualities and skill set and also have a safe place to go during the summertime. And that might be -- if it's $50 a week and you want it for a month, it's $200. And obviously, summer is not just one month. So, and that's, I'm sorry, that's kind of where my concern and trying to understand. And then if we have a playground program that's free, then in essence, it contradicts itself.
I understand the question regarding the leader in training program, and I think that the Assistant Director has articulated what we know about it. I believe that the per session is consistent with the weekly program period and that that is likely a weekly fee. Why it is identified as session as opposed to week, I don't know, and I think that we are unable to answer that question precisely tonight. So you have a couple of options. One would be to remove this particular fee from any action that you take and ask for subsequent clarification and action on that item, or to take some action on it pending clarification or the response that is -- that best satisfies the concern that you're addressing. In other words, if that, if session means the entire summer, which I believe is not correct, you could make that as part of your determination tonight. Regarding the playground program and the designation of that program being free, my only observation would be that it begs the question of why does it show up in the fee schedule if there is in fact no fee for it? But this program, in my understanding, is a different program than the summer day camp or other type of more structured supervised programs. So I'm not really entirely certain what your question is about the playground program, and I want to make sure that we're able to get you the information that you need. Pardon me? If you could, I'd appreciate it.
The only thing I was saying is if it's a program and you have young people attended and there is no cost, there obviously is a cost to the city.
There is a cost.
So, but it's free. So I understand, like in the leader in training, it's because they have to be supervised. Well, I'm sure in the playground program, somebody needs to be supervised and they need to be paid for it. So it begs the question, how can one be free and the other one cost the volunteer?
Right.
So to me, an excellent point about, then why is it in here too if it is free? So, is that?
I understand the question. My short answer, obviously, we would like to be able to get you some additional information about this. The short answer is that, as the council probably knows, these fees do not actually represent, for the most part, 100 percent cost recovery on the programs that they are charged for. There is, this is a -- most of the cost is covered for the, for most of these programs, but there is a balancing act that goes into determination of fees that starts with a understanding of what the cost of delivering the program, and these are typically individual services. So there is a policy articulated here that says tax revenues are not being used to, for the most part, to provide a service that is consumed on an individual basis for the benefit of an individual and not shared generally by the public as a whole. That said, that is part of, that's part of the evaluation. What is, what services should be considered for cost recovery? Next level of evaluation goes to what is the cost of the service. Additional evaluation occurs based on where are the other venues where this service might be provided in other cities, for example, by private providers, and what is our comparative cost? How do we stack up? How do we assure that there are an adequate number of participants to make the program viable and cost-effective? So there are a number of things that we evaluate as part of the, as part of the cost and the cost recovery of the program. A playground program very typically is offered for the purpose of providing an alternative and is generally viewed as something that should be supported by normal general fund revenues. And so that is philosophically, that is how cities typically look at some of their parks and recreation programs. And my understanding of the supervision that is provided, the limited amount of supervision that is provided in a playground program would typically be understood under that, under that general category as the reason for it being offered without a charge. So there is supervisory, there is some supervision provided, there is some expense incurred, and it is generally considered to be a general fund-supported type of service. What I don't know at this point and would like to be able to get you more information about is a little bit more detail about how that program actually operates, when and where, and how does it compare to the level of support and cost that is provided, for example, to the day camp program.
Yes, I would too, thank you.
I'm going to jump in here if I could. I've got, I got a real issue with a lot of these increases, and actually, there's one major decrease. The whole camps thing is being increased in many cases by $6, and the only, the only explanation is that the increase in prices reflects increase in the cost to run the camps. So I'm sure that the Park and Recreation Commission got a fairly detailed presentation on a lot of these items, I'm assuming. I don't feel comfortable just agreeing with that without any background information. I think this council has challenged some of the master fee increases, you know, as far as regarding this facility even. And I think if these fees are not going to be realized until next year, I think I'd feel more comfortable reviewing, you know, what the actual increase are. Even what sort of discussion happened at the Park and Rec Commission? You know, maybe there was more of an increase and they backed it off. I mean, those are the sort of things that I think we should take in consideration. But I, you know, this is, it seems easy to just say, yes, okay, that's understandable, but, I mean, what if it comes back again next year and it goes another $6 up and everything? And all of a sudden, you know, the community starts screaming that, you know, this used to be a great program, now it's unaffordable. So, and I don't like the excuse that it's still comparable with neighboring cities. That shouldn't even be a factor. It should be something that is, that we're paying, that, you know, that we're providing and that we're getting a certain measure of payback for it. So, I'm in favor with excluding park and recreation fees and revisiting.
Okay, any other discussion?
Through the chair.
Michael?
I wanted to chime in. My son was actually in the LIT program, so I can answer part of your question. So the session, the way the sessions are defined, it's a week at a time, and they have to sign up for at least, well, I think, three sessions in order to participate. And I'm pretty sure, because I wrote the check this year, that it's already at $50 a week, because we signed up for four weeks and it was $200. So we might want to check and see if that's...
Overcharging.
Yeah. Can I get a refund?
Refunding.
So...
Ice cream bloody murder.
So, yeah, so in terms of the period, it is, it is one week a session because you have to sign up for the full week at a time, and it corresponds with each week of camp that they sign up to assist with. So, and the fee, I guess, is a little high, $50 bucks, but now I have a conflict.
You have to step outside.
All right, any, anything else before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would any members of the public like to address the council on this issue? If I close the public hearing, you're precluded from talking about this again, and... Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any action by the council? More discussion?
Since I threw a wrench in the deal here, I am going to...
You didn't start it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I can introduce the resolution for adoption excluding...
Park and Recreation.
Yeah, I would just exclude park and recreation fees if I can.
City attorney?
Just for clarification, by excluding, you mean to keep the fees at the same level as otherwise reflected in the original...
Exactly. No, no changes to park and recreation fees as listed, as specified, but introduce a resolution for everything else.
Okay, and it's your intention to bring those back with more clarification, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, would it be also possible, since I've gotten the answer, that it may be $50 and not $35, that we check the other rates to see if they're, because obviously...
Absolutely.
We may overrefund, unless Councilmember Salazar wants to...
Okay, was that an introduction with the modifications?
Yes.
So I'm going to clarify that you introduced the resolution and you excluded park and recs, and that will come back to you, correct?
Exclude the changes to park and rec.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
The second public hearing is to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution adopting a groundwater management plan for the southwest side basin.
I have here with me Jim Blanke, who is the project manager for the project. I will summarize for you the history of the project and also the purpose of the project, and I will let Jim to take you through the specific recommendation and the finding of the plan itself. And then at the end, you will have opportunity for clarifying questions and comments. As you are very well aware... Just some technical difficulties here. You can, needs to warm up. Will take some... I will keep talking and hopefully the slides will show up. They are not that critical. As you are aware, the city provides drinking water to our residents. Health, and here it is, health of the water is provided through surface water through the hatch hatchy system and SFPUC manage and provide that water for us. Health of the water comes from well production and from the groundwater. Reason why maintaining and sustaining the quality and the quantity of this critical resource is very important for the long-term health of the city. Reason why, back in 2007, the city took the leadership role and was lead agency, requested a grant from the Water Resource Board in collaboration with Daly City and Cal Water, who are partners in this, in the management of the basin and also in the application for the grant. In 2009, you, this issue came against before you and you approved a contract for BRIM to manage the development of this groundwater management plan. And also then this item became, came back for your consideration in 2010 when after a public hearing, you expressed your intent to develop a groundwater management plan. The purpose of, the purpose of the management plan, in essence, to establish a collaborative framework for the long-term sustainability of the basin. There are many stakeholders who had the same joint purpose and interest to manage the basin for long-term sustainability of the capacity, the quantity, the yield of the basin, but also to maintain and to be able to guarantee the quality of the groundwater For the first time, also in this development of the plan and in this collaborative framework, private entities and stakeholders were included and they participated very actively in the development of the plan itself. And one of the most active participants in the development of the plan were the cemeteries, which have a very strong interest also in the management of the basin. In the beginning of the development of the plan, a advisory board was established with, of course, the partner agencies and also with broad participation from other stakeholders, including the Water Resource Board, BASCA, other local agencies. The city of Colma was a very active participant of the development of the plan. Were, the advisory board held six advisory committee meetings and also five public meetings. Local residents were invited also to participate in the development of the plan, and a few residents from San Bruno expressed their desire to be, to kept informed and to be aware of the progress of the development of the plan. The plan itself has two major components. The first component is a summary of the available information and scientific base. Based on that scientific information, then, it was made, was a assessment made on the condition of the basin itself. Based on that information then, and the assessment of the condition of the system, was developed on a collaborative, based on a very collaborative approach, a joint purpose, goals and objectives, and also strategies, how those objectives can be achieved, and also specific threshold was, or was established or trigger points when, what kind of action then the stakeholders and the advisory board for the management of this basin will need to take. And I will let Jim to take you through those major, those two major sections of the plan. And first, I will let him also, which I intended to, but I didn't, I skipped over the basin itself, the location of the basin, and also the overlaying entities and agency of the basin.
So the southwest side basin...
Excuse me, Jim, you're going to have to slide over just a little bit, you're in the screen.
Am I in the way?
Yeah. Your chair, there you go.
Sit down. There we go. So the southwest side basin is a portion of the overall west side basin, which extends from the Sunset District of San Francisco through northern San Mateo County as far south as Burlingame. We've looked at just the San Mateo County portion of the basin, so extends from the northern boundary of Daly City down through the Cow Water Service area in Colma and South San Francisco, through San Bruno, Millbrae, and into Burlingame. The bulk of the groundwater production in the basin is within Daly City, Cow Water, and San Bruno Service area. Millbrae and Burlingame use exclusively surface water for their supplies. So as Clara mentioned, you know, we began the stakeholder process and we began the document itself with developing a common technical understanding of the condition of the groundwater basin. And one of the, one of the basic questions is, well, how much, how much can we pump? How much can we pump sustainably? And so what we looked at is, as far as sustainability is concerned, how much can we pump over a long period of time while maintaining the current groundwater levels in our basin? And we looked at this largely through the numerical groundwater model, which was developed collaboratively with the other stakeholders in the basin, San Bruno, Cow Water, Daly City, and the SFPUC. And what that allows us to do is allows us to look at calibrated estimates of recharge. You can see here we have recharge of 8,600 acre-feet per year, and we can compare that with our recent pump... And we can compare that with our, our recent pumping and we can see that those, those numbers are pretty close in balance, so showing that we're able to maintain our current levels of pumping over the long term with, and maintain their current groundwater levels. And we took that information and, and plugged it back into the model for a more robust analysis where we can look at different management techniques and how those management techniques can change our groundwater levels and looked at what's really the maximum amount of groundwater we can pump and maintain zero change in groundwater elevations. And, and we were able to confirm that, that 8,600 acre feet per year is really their, that level and we defined that as our basin capacity yield. And, and that is again, very close to our, our current production of about 85, 64 acre feet per year. And so that's the basin wide number. So we're pretty much in balance there and it's showing that our current conditions are going to be able to maintain the groundwater levels for, for years to come. The next step we did is we looked at the, the 2010 urban water management plans that were developed by all the agencies in the basin. And those 2010 urban water management plans provide projections of future groundwater production through 2030, some of them through 2035. And we added them all together and looked at what those increases over time are going to do to our groundwater basin. And what it shows is it shows a slight increase in groundwater production over time to about 8,900 acre feet per year. That's a couple of percent increase over our, our basin capacity yield. And given the range of climatic variability and the uncertainty in our demand estimates, uncertainty in the, in the modeling, you know, we feel that that is still pretty much in balance and still pretty much shows a sustainable level of groundwater production in the basin. We also looked at, at the quality of the groundwater and, and we found that, you know, the basin has generally good quality groundwater and that the water delivered to the customers are, are meeting all state and federal regulations. So based on that technical understanding, the common technical understanding that we came to with the stakeholders, we developed a, a management framework to manage the basin moving forward. And we did this through what are termed a basin management objectives. And the basin management objectives basically takes our overall goal and splits it up into more manageable pieces that are, that are measurable. And you can, you can define triggers and then define actions that you're going to take if those triggers are passed. So we looked at five different areas. The first one is maintaining acceptable groundwater levels. And we set our thresholds as the historical minimum groundwater levels in our wells. And so what we said is if, if water levels go below that, that's something we want to look at. And so we want to have kind of a line there. So if it goes below that, the, the document lists a series of actions that, that could take place and kind of a toolbox for the, for the agencies to use at that time of things that they could do. None of them are prescribed. There's no actions that have to be taken. We wanted to leave the flexibility there because time, you know, conditions change over time. There'll, there'll be different knowledge, different conditions. And so they want to be able to be flexible on how to react if those thresholds are passed. Similarly, for the groundwater quality, we want to maintain or improve groundwater quality. And we focused on, on two different constituents, chloride and nitrate. Chloride is an indicator of seawater intrusion and nitrate is, is a nutrient that we see more in the, more towards the north and the, and the South San Francisco Daly City area. And we set the chloride threshold at 10% above the historical maximum. We just want to keep an eye on our chloride levels and make sure that we don't see any evidence of seawater intrusion. We haven't seen any yet. We want to make sure that we continue to monitor that and be aware of, of the conditions of our basin. And then for nitrate, we set that at 80% of the, of the MCL, the maximum contaminant level that's set by DPH. So if we see rising nitrate levels, we want to focus it on those wells and think, and try and understand why those are increasing if they are and what kind of management measures can be taken to try and reduce that impact. We also looked at limiting the impact of point source contamination. So these are the United Airlines facility, gas stations, dry cleaners that may have leaking underground storage tanks. And there's no, there's no quantitative measure for this. It's mainly just making sure we organize, we coordinate with the, with the lead agency for those cleanup activities, whether that's the regional board, the EPA, or, or the San Mateo County. We also looked at land subsidence monitoring. Land subsidence hasn't been an issue in the San Bruno area like it has been in the southern part of the bay. We want to make sure that we stay on top of that and see if that becomes an issue in the future. And we also looked at managing the interactions of our groundwater with our surface water and see if there's opportunities to maybe increase recharge from our surface water courses and make sure that the groundwater isn't causing any problems with our surface water courses. And so based on, on those basin management objectives, we have a, a series of items in the plan that will help us meet those objectives. First and foremost is maintaining our collaborative approach and working with the other agencies and stakeholders in the basin through the groundwater task force, which was established largely through our advisory committee. We're looking to pursue additional grants. The groundwater management plan was funded through AB 303 grant from the Department of Water Resources. If you recall, the city received a previous AB 303 grant to help us install seawater intrusion monitoring wells along San Francisco Bay. So it's been a, a good program and it continues. We want to potentially look at analyzing shallow groundwater conditions in the basin and how we might be able to improve recharge and, and increase our ability to produce groundwater. And, and going back to the collaboration framework, we want to be able to continue to share our hydrogeological knowledge and operational information so that all the stakeholders can benefit from all that knowledge, continue monitoring and reporting of groundwater conditions, continue our, our meetings with stakeholders, and update the plan when and if additional information is available.
It is our recommendation for you to approve the groundwater management plan. And we'll be, our, our intent also to come back probably next meeting to make a recommendation for you to support the grant application for the project, what Jim just was referring to, for the shallow water monitoring and also update of the flow mon, flow monitoring program.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, at this time, this is a public hearing. We're gonna open the public hearing. Would anyone in the public like to address the counsel on this item? If I close the public hearing, you're gonna be precluded from discussing it with us. Any action?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion or action? Irene?
Clara, toward the end, for implementation, it talks about the administration of this, but it doesn't really name who or what agency is the lead agency on this. So does each agency that's listed, is each agency that's listed in here accepting the same ground management proposal? Or do they each have their own and then we're still getting together and collaborating? Or I, I didn't quite understand how it actually physically works.
This is a plan developed in collaboration with the other agencies. Was already in your package, a letter of support from, or a letter of acceptance from Cal Water. They already accepted the plan and is, it is their intent to implement the plan. Also, you, you received a support letter from SAPUC. The reason why you received a support letter and not a approval or acceptance that practically SAPUC is part of the West Side Basin, but not the South West Side Basin Agency. But they still have a very specific and strong inter, interest in the proper management of the Southwest Side Basin. Reason why they express their support and their intent to work collaboratively from now on and also to implement the plan. And is Daly City is intending to have on their council agenda for the, the next month or so. And is their intent, they are, they are supporting everything in this plan. This was developed in collaboration with them. And it's my assumption at this time that they will approve this plan, how it's presented to you tonight. Of course, I cannot guarantee that. But certainly based on the information today, they are supportive of the plan and this, their intent to implement the plan. Now, in the plan itself, they are included many possible means, how you can implement this management plan. From the most flexible one to the most stringent one, entering in joint power agreements. Was our recommendation at this time, based on the fact that this will be the first groundwater management plan approved for this basin. And the information level can be further improved. At this time, our more flexible approach managing the basin through a collaborative means would be the most recommended at this time. If later on, the agencies will feel that for, for certain reason, a MOU would be a next step recommendation to enter and to, in a memorandum of understanding with the other stakeholder, that could be a next step in the process.
Okay. I, I understand all that and I, and I read that part, but so like who, do you have regular meetings? Somebody calls it, somebody's in the lead, some, it's, do you meet the people that are here, that are listed, all the stakeholders?
Right now, the city was the lead agency for the development of the plan. Will be our intent to have those task force meeting on ongoing basis. And will be established by joint agreement by that group, how often would be useful to have those ongoing meetings. Maybe later on, doesn't necessarily San Bruno has to be always the agency who will call on those meeting, but maybe those can be rotated between those partners and, and agency. But everything will be based on the recommendation and the proposal in this plan.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I like your question. I'm not sure if it was, who is the lead?
The lead agency was San Bruno. The lead agency is for the development of the plan, the city of San Bruno, and is our intent from now on also to make sure that the city is willing to take the lead to make sure that those meetings and collaboration will happen.
Okay. That's, I, I, I've seen plans and I've been a party to plans where we, the great, we ask all the questions and they sit on the shelf and people forget about them. So this is, I don't want that to happen. I'm, I know you wouldn't let it happen, but just making sure. And then the other question, I, I have to say, whoever put this together, every time I had a question, I kept reading and the next page answered the question. So, so my, my list was very short now. It talked in here about United Airlines being a concerned partner, but I don't understand why the airport as a whole isn't. I know they're part of San Francisco PUC and I understand all that, but not so much the water use because that's different, but the contamination part, I'm very concerned that they as a whole may not be as aware or as stringent, watching out as stringently as they could if they're not more a part of this. So I don't know if that's feasible or out, you know, out the door or what.
You are absolutely right and probably was my mistake not to list them as stakeholder here. But certainly they were invited to participate in the development of the plan and they were included in, in the task force and they, if I remember right, they attended the first meeting, they expressed some interest, they were informed, they, basically all of the information was sent to them also. They were more silent, but they were participant in the process. And I am assuming of their presence, stronger presence will be needed based on their history in the collaboration on this project would tell me that they would be willing to come to the table and that would be advisable to have a stronger presence.
Okay. Uh, thank you. That's, that was really my only concern after all that.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Any action?
Let's see. I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Rueng?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Before we do nine, we're going to move item 11 up, which is the, receive the annual report from the Culture and Arts Commission.
That was all super fun.
Hey, every two weeks, come on by.
You chose a good night.
I usually just watch it from home, but.
Yeah, yeah, you wouldn't watch this one.
I'm Melody Tobin, Culture and Arts Commission. I have some of my fellow commissioners here. Tammy Parker, Pamela Gamble, and Carolyn Livinggood. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity and thank you for your continued support to the commission. After listening to fees and expenses and it's nice to have something that's just about culture and arts, that's not about money, even though we do spend money, but we bring in our own money to spend. So we're gonna give you an overview of what we've done the last year and a little bit about what we hope to do in the next year. So the purpose of the commission, we're responsible for promoting the artistic development of the community and preserving San Bruno's diverse cultural heritage. The commission's goals include acquiring and maintaining an inventory of public art, sponsoring programs and events that enhance the quality of life for the residents, and improving the image and character of the community. In the past year, we have dedicated the recognition sculpture in the city park, piloted public art exhibit program, we have movies in the park, Shakespeare in the Park, and we've welcomed new commissioners. Our newest commissioner, who's not with us this evening, is Pamela Madden. And June was her first meeting, so we are excited to have some new blood on our commission. The recognition sculpture project was a joint process with the Parks and Recs Commission. Over two years, we selected a site, solicited proposals, selected an artist, and brought to life the council's vision of a recognition sculpture to honor those who have served San Bruno. We're very proud of this joint effort and the results it's produced. The art exhibition policy, the goal of this is to encourage local artists and appreciation of art in the community, to provide a space in the community for the public to view a wide variety of art. The policy was approved in April of 2012 and a call for artists was issued in this past June. Our first exhibition will be mounted in September of this year in the library. Our annual event, Movies in the Park, what we're probably most known for, is September on Friday nights, we show movies in the park. It's coordinated one evening with the family overnight in the park. And we have an average of 150 attendees per Friday night. We have a group, a youth activity group, that comes and sells treats and snacks and everybody has generally a good time. The weather, for the most part, still holds in September. It's a little chilly, but everybody bundles up and has a great time. We've also have Shakespeare in the Park, usually in October. Last year, the weather was unbelievable. Everybody came in shorts and t-shirts. It wasn't as well attended as we'd like it to be, but hopefully in the coming years it will catch on and people will start to realize that October for us is Shakespeare in the Park. The projects that we have proposed for this upcoming year, of course, Movies in the Park, presently on the city website, you can vote for your choice for Movie in the Park. We put up 10 or 11 selections. The one that we're most pulling for that's never made it to the park is Jaws. So if everybody, I'm lobbying for my favorite movie, log on and vote for Jaws.
Good family movie.
It is a family movie. We won't do it on the overnight, but it's a family movie. And we do plan again to host Shakespeare in the Park, to have our first art exhibit and to continue with the art exhibit. It's a 12-month program and we're going to rotate local artists every quarter. And then we have some suggestions for future projects, which we of course will bring to the council. We have something to bring with you in August for the consent calendar. Some of our ideas for future projects. The commission would like to return to the council later this year to present some of our suggestions. These are a few of the ideas we're exploring and would be interested in any feedback council has to offer. On Sneeath Lane, the commission has developed a list of potential project art sites. After reviewing them to determine land ownership, visibility, project type, we feel the retaining walls along. it's on the west side of town where there currently is no public art, and is a highly visible location. Performing art possibilities, we've discussed partnering to bring some community theater, poetry, or possibly having live classical music during lunchtimes at the Bay Hill area to promote relationships with our business community. And that is what I have, it's short and sweet. Does council have any questions?
Any questions? Irene?
I think it's wonderful. I'm so excited to see the recognition sculpture up. It was fabulous, and if anyone hasn't had a chance to see it yet, it's in San Bruno Park, and it's next, it's on, to the left side of the Recreation Building, in between the park, in between the pool and the Recreation Building. It's wonderful. I have a question or an idea throughout or something, and the year 2014 is our city's 100th anniversary. You're nodding, so I, you've already figured that out. So I'm wondering if, if you're looking for something to do to commemorate that in a way of public art?
We are open to partnerships, and one of, what we do is we try to partner with other community bits, and we've actually had someone come and do a presentation to us about the 100th anniversary of the school system. But we are looking for the 100th anniversary of the city, and we will, we will be doing something. But it is definitely something we will, we will put on our agenda. We are here to do, at your direction, what you have as a vision for the city, and we couldn't do what we do without the support of the council and without the support of our staff. Our staff liaison is John Alida, he's the one that keeps us on track, and we, we couldn't do what we do without him. Thank you.
Wait a minute.
No, you have more? John, you wanna take a bow?
I can't agree with you more. I mean, with all of this controversial type of decision-making we make, you know, it's, it is a nice, nice relief to, you know, to review, you know, public art and things, and I, I gave it all to her. We've been on here many years, and didn't think that it was that, that important back then, but Irene kept, kept bringing it forward. And so, I mean, I, I'm proud of her for that and thank her for that. I'm, I'm looking for more involvement with kids, and I think, and I believe the Culture and Arts Commission got, sort of got involved with the fire department, with the fire prevention posters. Big response from all the schools and that, and I think maybe, you know, we can expand on that, because kids are the future, and, you know, they're very artistic and they're very creative, you know, and maybe, you know, some component with that, because I, I see your exhibition going towards, you know, very talented, maybe older individuals. Older than kids.
We did help, we did help sponsor the first Day of the Child Day of the Book, it's something, and I'm not saying it correctly, in the city park, which has become an annual event. So we are, we are here to sponsor and help and coordinate any events or other community programs that need a little assistance. One of the, something that we have going, coming to us is, we've reached out to, East Palo Alto has a music and art program that we've asked them to come and do a presentation to us, and it's, it's sort of youth art, kind of, I believe it started with maybe tagging and turning that into an art form. So we've asked them to come and give us a presentation to see how they've managed to get their young people involved in public art in a positive manner instead of a destructive manner.
Well, as I always say, the boards, commissions, and committees of this city are the lifeblood of this city, because it's all volunteer. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun. So I can't say enough, on behalf of the entire city of San Bruno, thank you very, very much. You've accomplished a lot, and I go along with everything you said, as long as you don't show Jaws at the 100th anniversary.
Okay. Well, not the 100th anniversary.
Movies in the Park, maybe.
Jaws.
But thank you very, very much.
Well, you can log on and vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riekel, did you wanna make a comment?